Good morning, everyone. The guests and visitors will retire behind the rail. We will get moving. Thank you. Before we start our session today, I would ask if anyone has a cellphone or any other electronic device that makes any kind of noise, would you please turn it off or turn it on airplane mode? Thank you very much for your cooperation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor William Bronner of Haven-Panama United Methodist Church. He is here today as my guest. Pastor, I'd ask all guests, members, and visitors to please rise.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let us look to the Lord. Dear heavenly and most gracious God, we worship you. We give you thanks. We praise you for your glory. God, right now, as we sit in this chamber, as we sit at the helm of your feet, God, we ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us. Fill this place with your Spirit, God. Allow us always to remember the people in whom you wish us to touch and the people who have been lost and forgotten and the people who we represent on this morning, dear God. God, right now, we pray for our schools. We pray for our churches. We pray for our communities. We pray for that mother who is single and has no food to eat. We pray for that brother who has come home from prison and has no job to welcome him home. God, right now, we ask that you remind us of who we are but whose we are, God, and who has put us in the positions that we're in right now. God, allow us not to forget what you have called us to do. And God, we will be ever so mindful to give you all the praise, honor, and glory. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Council will be at ease. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 20th, 2017, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 20th, 2017 be approved.
It's been moved improperly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 20th, 2017 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal was approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Hanen.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes... Where's he at? Councilman O'Neal? Is he here? Where's Councilman O'Neal? There he is. Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope that your stay here today is a knowledgeable one and, more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you so much for your participation in today's session. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who presented a resolution welcoming the National Football League draft. Would Peter O'Reilly... I don't know whether to call you former Eagles player or congressman. I'm gonna call you Congressman John Runyon. And our good friend Gary Cobb, please join the Councilman at the podium. In joining Councilman Johnson, we have Councilman Taubenberger.
So, this is a joint effort, and I learned under the explicable and dynamic leadership of my Council President that all things that we do in city council is a joint effort and it's a team effort. So I'm gonna ask for all of my colleagues to please join me at the podium and don their NFL draft hats, please.
Put the hats on.
So we also have, joining with us is Gary Cobb, also former congressman of the Philadelphia Eagles, Paul Runyon, and John Runyon. And also, Peter O'Reilly. And with my colleague, Councilman Al Taubenberger, we're doing a bipartisan presentation, and we won't hold it to our former congressman, Republican. So you'll give his background about the things he's worked on, and I'll talk about Mr. Cobb and Mr. O'Reilly.
Congressman Runyon, it is a pleasure. John Runyon is the current Vice President of Policy and Rules Administration for the National Football League. Runyon is a former two-term United States Congressman from New Jersey's third congressional district. Prior to running for office, Runyon was an offensive tackle and played 14 seasons in the NFL, nine of which were right down on Broad Street for the Philadelphia Eagles. During his 2002 season with the Eagles, Runyon was selected for the Pro Bowl. Runyon was also a member of the 2004 Super Bowl team. Runyon lives in New Jersey suburbs with his wife Loretta and three children.
Mr. Gary Cobb is the current TV and radio personality on Fox 29 and Sports Radio 94 WIP. Mr. Cobb also runs a popular Philadelphia sports website, GCOB.com. Prior to joining sports radio, Cobb played 11 seasons in the NFL as a linebacker, three of which were for the Philadelphia Eagles as a crucial member of Coach Buddy Ryan's extraordinary defense. Some of Cobb's teammates include Hall of Famer Troy Aikman and Michael Irvin. Mr. Cobb was honored in 2002 by President George W. Bush for his work with troubled youth. Mr. Cobb is married to his college sweetheart, and they have three adult children. Representing the NFL, we have Peter O'Reilly, who is the current Senior Vice President of Events for the National Football League. Peter O'Reilly oversees events such as the Super Bowl, Pro Bowl, NFL, draft, and others. Peter O'Reilly is no stranger to the NFL. He previously worked for the league and the fan strategy and marketing department. O'Reilly has also worked for the NBA and on New York City's 2012 Olympic bid. Okay, so it's only fitting that my colleagues who are standing by, who are standing on this podium here with me today, honor the NFL draft as we host them here this weekend here in the city of Philadelphia. I want to say hats off to the administration, Mayor Kenning and his team, and most importantly, the First Lady of our Councilman, Curtis Jones, Giselle Jones, who leads all the efforts here in the city of Philadelphia. And so, you know, the event is hosted in the great Councilmatic District of the Fifth, sponsored by our Council President, Darrell Clark. But I just think, as we move forward as a city, we had the Democratic National Convention. We also had the Pope. And hosting this event is just another example of the city of Philadelphia moving in the right direction. And as the Council President always says, it's a team effort. The administration, but most importantly, members of the city council that's doing the hard day-to-day work on making sure we get things done. And so, on behalf of the city of Philadelphia, we want to welcome the National Football League draft to the city of Philadelphia commemorating the first-ever NFL draft, which took place on February 8th in our city, 1936. Whereas the 82nd NFL draft will take place from April 27th to April 29th, 2017, largely centered around the Philadelphia Museum of Art and Benjamin Franklin Parkway. The event is expected to draw 200,000 football fans to Philadelphia and...
Whereas, Philadelphia has a long history with the NFL draft. Having played host to the inaugural draft on February 8th, 1936, the Philadelphia Eagles made the first player selection. Over the course of its 81-year history, the draft has returned to the city 15 times. And whereas, the NFL draft was instituted as a measure to create competitive balance in the league by allowing weaker teams from the previous season to select the most talented incoming players. As a result, the NFL has been able to create compelling competition across the league. This model has been followed by all other major American sports. In fact, there's a book about it on any given Sunday. So it proves it works. Whereas, major events such as the NFL draft help to advertise the city's thriving tourism industry. The draft will draw attention to Philadelphia's many attractions and offers yet another opportunity to showcase our great city. And whereas...
Whereas, the citizens of Philadelphia are deeply devoted to the sports franchise that call this city home, particularly the Philadelphia Eagles, which is located in the Second Councilmatic District. The 2017 NFL draft will allow Philadelphians to gather with sports fans from across the country in celebration of their favorite teams. The city of Philadelphia is proud to join with the NFL as the host of the 2017 draft. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby welcomes the NFL Football League draft to the city of Philadelphia and commemorates the first-ever NFL draft, which took place in the city of Philadelphia on February 8th of 1936. And on behalf of the city of Philadelphia, we want to officially present you this citation, say welcome to the city, and thank you very much.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. O'Reilly for remarks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Johnson. Thank you so much, Councilmember Taubenberger. Thank you, Council President Clark. On behalf of the National Football League, we could not be more excited that the NFL draft is headed home to its birthplace here in Philadelphia starting today. This city, this city council, the mayor, everybody across the city, superintendent, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, certainly Giselle Jones and her husband have been with us throughout this process, and incredibly partners. They have embraced, you have embraced the NFL draft, and I think you will see today and tonight and over the next three days that we at the NFL are embracing Philadelphia and bringing that to life on the national and global stage through the NFL draft. This is for us, one of our biggest moments, and we couldn't be more proud to be back here. It's not only about those three days on the Parkway, but it's everything we're doing this entire week in partnership with you in every part of the community, in schools, to make sure we leave a lasting impact here in Philadelphia. That's important wherever we go. We're thrilled to be here. The weather's fantastic, which we thank you for as well, and we are excited for our great three days. And I'll hand it over to my taller and more accomplished colleague, Mr. John Runyon.
Thank you, Council President Clark, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Taubenberger, and all members of council for this acknowledgement. You know, when I speak and from my background, what this is all about, it's about teamwork. We all had a role in this. We all have a hand in this. And when you want to talk about this nation, you want to talk about the National Football League, it all started right here in Philadelphia. You know, talking about the first National Football Draft, 81 years ago here, Bert Bell started it right here at the Ritz-Carlton on Broad Street. But you know what? You want to know the irony of the whole thing? The last time the NFL draft was in Philadelphia was 1960. What happened? The Eagles won the world championship. Hey, another thing just to hang your hat on. So, on behalf of another former Eagle, Troy Vincent, who is actually Executive Vice President of Football Operations at the NFL and my boss, we thank you for your partnership. Between Troy and I, we know how much football means to this city. It's great to be here. And again, on behalf of the National Football League, thank you for this resolution, and thank you for your hospitality, and have a great day. The gates open at noon today.
Good afternoon, everybody. I also would like to thank the city council, of course, for welcoming the National Football League. But I'd like to emphasize something else that these few days are about. Last night, I was sitting with a young man who could very well be drafted by the Eagles. His name is Derek Barnett. He played at the University of Tennessee. I was sitting with him and his mom, and they were recounting all of the different challenges they've been through. You know, he was raised by a single mom, and they went through some tough times where they had some challenges financially and a lot of different challenges they went through as a family. But they're able to experience what can be, what's going to be, an outstanding evening for the young man and his family. And that's one of the great things about the NFL. National Football League is giving these young men a chance to live out their dream, giving a lot of young families and an opportunity to experience really some of the great things about not only our world and our country, but of course, the city of Philadelphia, but being able to live out their dream. And really, that's what it's all about. That's what we really expound as a country, for young folks to be able to dream of doing different things and then get the chance to experience it. And that's what we're gonna see tonight. So you're gonna see a lot of tears, a lot of people tearing up and crying about this experience, but we're gonna all be able to enjoy it with them. So I just encourage you to enjoy this night. It's gonna be a great time for everybody, and there'll be a lot of tears shed, but there'll be tears of joy, and that's what's gonna be great about it. God bless you, and nice to talk to you.
Thank you. Council will be at ease. Thank you. Exciting three days. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution acknowledging the PEN Assist Program, Bridging the Gap from High School to Building Trades. Would Steve Grulick, Anthony Wigglesworth, Dr. William Height, and those accompanying them, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. In joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman... Councilwoman is suggesting that everybody come up.
Thank you. So we're asking all of Labor, all of PEN, Dr. Height, the school district, Darrell Clark, my partner, all who are here. And Ken Yada thought he started something, but we have everybody included because this resolution will affect all our districts. It's not just Janie Blackwell and West and Southwest. This is a citywide change, and that is why everybody, we're asking everybody to read a part. Blondell, please start us out.
I would add my editorial comment that this is a citywide sea change wherein the entire city, when done right, and under Councilwoman Blackwell's leadership, I am sure it will be done right. I had the good fortune to work in Harrisburg as a legislative aide when Governor Casey was, Senator Casey's father was governor. And I often heard him say, "The question is, and what did you do with the power when you had it?" Councilwoman Blackwell has pulled together an unprecedented group of stakeholders who, under her leadership, I am sure will get it right when it comes to ensuring that young people in the school district end up with skills that they can get them a job and move them, and so that we can reduce that 25% poverty rate. This matters, and I congratulate Councilwoman Blackwell for that. Acknowledging and commending the University of Pennsylvania, L.F. Driscoll, the School District of Philadelphia, and the Philadelphia Building Trades Council for their establishment of the unprecedented PEN Assist Program, Bridging the Gap from High School to Building Trades. PEN Assist Program, Bridging the Gap from High School to Building Trades. An unprecedented effort to promote and support our city's youth in their pursuit of careers in the building trades.
Whereas, Penn Medicine is developing a new state-of-the-art hospital to be known as the New Patient Pavilion in the University City area of the Third Council District in the city of Philadelphia and... Whereas, the development of the hospital will provide significant economic opportunities for residents and businesses in the city of Philadelphia and the region and...
Whereas, minority and women workers and minority and women-owned businesses have often not had equal opportunity to work on construction projects occurring in the city and...
Whereas, the School District of Philadelphia Career and Technical Education, CTE, programs in construction are half-empty because graduates have not been able to find work as apprentice or continue their building trades education by getting into union apprenticeship programs and...
Whereas, in October 2016, the Director of the CTE Program testified in council that the district views city council as an important partner and requested that council advocate for the building trade unions to partner with the district's CTE programs to increase student access to the union apprenticeship programs and...
Whereas, the University of Pennsylvania, its construction manager, L.F. Driscoll, the Philadelphia Building Trades Council, and the School District of Philadelphia have collaborated to create the PEN Assist Program to provide a pathway to union apprenticeship for graduates of CTE and other pre-apprenticeship programs to promote workforce diversity on PEN construction projects and construction projects around the city and...
Whereas, under the program, 2017 CTE graduates can enroll after completing a CTE program focused on a career in the building trades. An information session will be provided at each of the CTE locations to inform students of the program. All interested students can sign up and...
Whereas, students will undergo a skills assessment and receive help obtaining a driver's license. Students will participate in a two- to three-week boot camp to begin July 2017, where they will receive basic math and work with skills training as well as OSHA training. The skills assessment and boot camp results will aid in PEN Assist Team of students to identify the trades most suitable for each student. All students will receive a small stipend to cover the cost of lunch and transportation for the duration of the boot camp and...
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell. Whereas, following the boot camp, the PEN Assist Team will pair each student with the most aligned trade and trade contractor, and the student will begin to work on a PEN Medicine or PEN Construction project, where students will perform work of a first-year apprentice and receive pay of $16.50 an hour and...
And a point of personal privilege, I'm a 26-year member... I'm a 26-year member of the Philadelphia Building Trades, and I could not be prouder than this moment here today. The Building Trades have had partners with the School District and a lot of nonprofits throughout its years, and its end-users, its institutions. But it took leadership of Councilwoman Blackwell, thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, the Business Manager of Philadelphia Building Trades, John Dougherty, to put these pieces together in one agreement like this. It's historic, and I am extremely proud, as you all should be, to present this resolution here today as we stand with all members of city council. Whereas, during the 12 months of the program, students will have the opportunity to sit for an apprenticeship test in their trade choice and may access additional math and work skill training through the General Builders Contractors Association.
If a student misses the scheduled test, the Philadelphia Building Trades Council will allow for an apprentice test to be administered to a student outside the regular testing schedule. Students who pass the test will join the union and continue working in the building trade, and...
Whereas, the program is planned for the 2017 CTE graduates, and it is intended to be continued into the future and is further intended to be expanded to include future graduates and other young Philadelphians outside the CTE program. Now therefore be it.
Resolve that city council hereby acknowledges and commends the University of Pennsylvania, L.F. Driscoll, the School District of Philadelphia, and the Philadelphia Building Trades Council for their establishment of the Penn Assist Program, Bridging the Gap from High School to Building Trades, and...
Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented as an expression of city council's sincere thanks and gratitude for this unprecedented effort to promote and support city youth in their pursuit of careers in building trades. And let's give another huge round of applause for Councilwoman Janie Blackwell and her leadership.
And the Chair recognizes Steve Gruelick, Anthony Wigglesworth, and Dr. William Height, in that particular order. Whatever order you want.
Thank you, Council President Clark. Thank you, members of city council, in particular, Councilwoman Blackwell, for making sure that the School District was a part of this work. And one thing that we have always and continue to do is to ensure that our young people have opportunities. And this type of partnership creates those opportunities for young people coming directly out of high school. It gives them opportunities to work in the field of building trades. And the fact that 2017 graduates, once they graduate from one of our CTE programs, has a direct pathway into this type of opportunity is very exciting and a very exciting day for the students in the city of Philadelphia and the School District of Philadelphia. So, once again, to all of the individuals who were involved, thank you, L.F. Driscoll, Building Trades, University of Pennsylvania. Thank you to my colleague in the CTE office and all of the other individuals who made this happen. But more importantly, thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, for making us a part of this very important initiative.
Good morning. I'm Steve Gruelick with Penn Medicine. And on behalf of Penn and Penn Medicine, I would just like to thank council for this honor. And especially like to thank Councilwoman Blackwell for her leadership in this and for her passion for bringing and for getting young Philadelphian students into the building trades. I believe that behind every successful program is a strong partnership. And as has been noted here, I'd just like to acknowledge the School District of Philadelphia, the General Building Contractors Association, Philadelphia Building Trades Council, Biltwright, and L.F. Driscoll for partnering with Penn Medicine on this program. And so, I think I speak for all of us when I say we look forward to starting this, implementing this program, and seeing its fruits in the youth of the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Good morning. It's not good evening yet. What you see up here is a manifestation of the process that we engaged in to come up with this program, starting with the persistence and the challenges that were thrown at by Councilwoman Blackwell. A large group of us got together to figure out how to make a better process to allow our young men and young women in the city of Philadelphia, who are in our public schools, access to our Building Trades Council unions. The Building Trades Council and its affiliates is four-square behind this program. There is a belief that this is the way to find our talented, and I want to emphasize talented, young men and young women, to find their way into our building trades unions. Some do now, more will in the future. I want to thank my partners in this process, the Philadelphia Building Construction Trades Council, L.F. Driscoll, Penn Medicine, the University of Pennsylvania, and the School District of Philadelphia's CTE program, for what I think will be an extremely effective way to move people into family-sustaining jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Della Clark and John Christmas to join me here. These are my partners along with Stan Strata, who had to go to Jersey today on another issue. And all of those who are here have not been introduced. We have Sam Stateen, Local 332, and other members who are here who've come to show all of their support. We invite them to stand, any of you who've come from Labor. Thank you, Sam, as well. And let me say that Tony Wigglesworth and I, I got moved because I think of Lucian Blackwell. As all of you know, this is a Labor town. We can't do it without one another. We couldn't do it, of course, without the kids, Dr. Height. We couldn't do it without all of you. And we included all of you in this resolution because it affects all of us in our neighborhoods and in our schools. And Tony Wigglesworth and I worked years ago when Lucian was still alive and we had the Luciene Blackwell Apprenticeship Program before the economy hit and we lost that program with Penn. And I'm just moved today that we're all here together and that we prove, no matter how much we can agree or disagree, we can come together to improve the quality of life, help youngsters, help people in neighborhoods, because some people have already graduated who want to take the test, and they're not children. And... But it's an open program so that we can make life better. We can do better in all jobs. We can do better across the board when it comes to employment. And I'm moved today, and I say, "Thank you, Lord, and God bless you."
And Councilwoman, be at ease. You gotta move down here and take pictures. Photo op. Got to memorialize it. Thank you. And again, congratulations to the Councilwoman. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez, who presented a resolution honoring Judith Bernstein Baker. Would Ms. Bernstein Baker and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman O., Councilman Jones, Councilman Greenley, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Could her family join her up here? I know her grandson and her husband. Could you please join us up? Where's your grandson?
Thank you. It's a different world post-November. And I think this is a fitting time to really honor and recognize someone who's been really a trailblazer when it comes to protecting, defending refugees and really has educated and informed the city of Philadelphia around the importance of our immigrant community. Judy has retired, but she is busier today than she was when she was running HIAS. I asked her, "What are you going to do outside of recovering from her surgery?" And she gave me 12 things. Well, I wrote a book, I'm teaching at community college, I'm educating lawyers around immigration, and I've learned to knit. And she's making pussy hats, sorry. And so, the women of council are going to put in an order for our hats. We really thank her for all of the work that she has done. She has helped all of us in our advocacy and in our work. And I'm sure there are hundreds of people who are in this country as contributing members who sought refuge with her and the work that she's done, and we really want to thank her. So with that, I thank my council colleagues who joined me this morning in recognizing and honoring Judith Bernstein Baker. Judith Bernstein Baker, born to Jewish immigrants from Poland and raised among Latino and Asian seamstresses in New York, has devoted every waking moment of her career to welcoming strangers facing exclusion and genocide into the fabric of our community and to ensuring these new neighbors full access to everything our diverse and vibrant neighborhoods have to offer, and...
Whereas Judy's 18 years of service to HIAS Pennsylvania has been deeply personal per the Jewish value of welcoming the stranger. HIAS is the nation's oldest international migration and refugee resettlement agency providing legal and supportive services to immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers to assure their fair treatment and full integration into American society. And whereas since joining HIAS Pennsylvania as Executive Director in 1998, Judy has led the nonprofit to triple in size and expand its services to provide legal, social, and resettlement services to low-income Philadelphians who seek political asylum, citizenship, and relief from deportation, and...
Whereas during Judy's tenure, HIAS Pennsylvania has relocated refugees fleeing violence in Central America and West Africa, secured temporary protective status to Haitians after the 2010 earthquake, helped citizens obtain special visas for refugees from domestic violent... From domestic abuse, and became the region's largest provider of free immigration services to unaccompanied, abused, and neglected minors, and...
Whereas since the day Judy first arrived in the city of brotherly love to attend the University of Pennsylvania's Graduate School of Social Work and Temple University's Beasley School of Law, she has helped grow the city of Philadelphia's international reputation for welcoming, supporting, and embracing members of our society who have fled oppression, violence, and even torture, and...
Whereas Judy's tireless outreach and advocacy has influenced the preservation and expansion of immigrant rights, not only by the city of Philadelphia, but also by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In 2003, Judy courageously established the Pennsylvania Immigrant and Citizen Coalition, our first and only statewide immigration advocacy organization. Most famously, Judy halted PennDOT's proposed cancellation of thousands of licenses for immigrants and refugees in need, and...
Whereas Judy Bernstein Baker is a living legend in Philadelphia's public interest community. She was the first staff attorney at the Support Center for Child Advocates, the nation's oldest and largest pro bono program for abused and neglected children. She founded and directed the Penn Law Public Service Program, the first of its kind in an Ivy League school. She enlisted and trained hundreds of attorneys and law students in order to assist applicants for citizenship. She co-wrote Understanding Immigration Law and Practice: A Guide for the Next Generation of Practitioners to Protect Immigrants and Refugees to the fullest extent of our laws. And she continues to advocate tirelessly and without pause for all Philadelphians' right to legal counsel to secure basic everyday needs, and...
Whereas in 2013, the Philadelphia Bar Foundation Award, originally known as the Apotheker Award, was presented to Judy Bernstein Baker for exemplifying the highest ideas of public interest law and exceptional service to the legal service community, and... Whereas Judy's career is perhaps, most of all, marked by her unwavering dedication to her staff, colleagues throughout the Philadelphia public interest community. Best put by Reggie Schoford, Executive Director of the ACLU of Pennsylvania. And I quote, "Judy always took the time to offer a word of encouragement or support to attend an event or to send a congratulatory message. It is her warmth, compassion, empathy, and genuine interest in others that made her so effective. As an advocate for social justice, we will miss her among the ranks of the executive directors of nonprofit legal service organizations. But we are confident to know she is just a phone call away. Now therefore be it."
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that the Council honors, recognizes our dear friend Judith Bernstein Baker upon her retirement and her second cycle of advocacy.
upon her retirement and her second cycle of advocacy from HIAS and a lifelong career in support and embracing of our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you so much, Judy.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Bernstein Baker for remarks.
Thank you very much, Council President Clark. And of course, thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez and Gimm, and Councilman Jones, Greenlee and O., and Councilwoman Blackwell, all of whom have done so much to welcome immigrants and refugees to Philadelphia. And I don't know if there's anybody left from the Building Trades Council, but just so you know, my mother was an immigrant union organizer with the then ILGWU. And her story was recorded because she participated in many strikes and picket lines. And she informed me that one of the biggest problems they had was the fear that immigrants had to press for their labor rights. And the story hasn't changed much. I'm so happy to see there's a resolution later following this about fair wages for our working-class brother and sister immigrants. But now, I am truly honored and humbled by this resolution. And it is true that work with immigrants and refugees is my passion. But retired advocates don't just fade away. We continue to work as volunteers and activists, especially when the current climate targets immigrants and refugees based on unfounded fear and xenophobia. Keeping Philadelphia a welcoming city has never been more important. I want to share very briefly four lessons I learned when I was privileged to be the Executive Director of HIAS Pennsylvania. I learned the real importance of religious freedom because so many of the refugees and immigrants even that we provided legal and social services to fled religious persecution in their home countries. And it reminded me what an important value that is to be treasured. Policies like a refugee and Muslim ban that are so diametrically at odds with this foundation need to be opposed, and I thank our city leadership, who came to the airport on Saturday night and later on Sunday, and those who wanted to come but couldn't, to protect the refugees and immigrants who were caught in the executive ban. And by the way, one of those refugees, the spouse of an Iraqi translator for the U.S. Armed Forces, was a client of National HIAS, my national organization, and is now reunited with their families. I learned that immigrants and refugees contribute economically, culturally, professionally, and of course financially to our city and nation. I've witnessed individuals who worked two and three jobs to support their families, who've opened businesses, and have revitalized neighborhoods. Look at West Philadelphia, look at Northeast Philadelphia, look at South Philadelphia, and hopefully one day, look at my own community, Northwest Philadelphia. It is therefore astounding, absolutely astounding, that high public officials perpetrate alternative facts that immigrants take jobs away from Americans, that they are criminals, and that they will do harm to our country. I suppose immigrants are scapegoated to deflect attention from our real problems of poverty, unemployment, and public education. And now we have solutions through this program that was just described before us. And I am sure some immigrants, young people, will join that program. I am thankful to live in a city where our government does not engage in this divisive rhetoric or practices. I learned the critical importance of work like of organizations, nonprofits like HIAS Pennsylvania, and there are others certainly in our city, which provide legal, social, and support services to refugees and immigrants working alongside community-based groups who are organizing for immigrant and refugee rights. But I can't sugarcoat this last lesson. And that is, the ultimate goal of many who campaign to deport undocumented immigrants and even strip citizenship from children born to immigrants is to target immigrants of color and stop all immigration. It is alarming that today, in high positions in the Department of Homeland Security and the executive branch, there are individuals from the Federation for Immigration Reform and the Center for Immigration Studies. These organizations seek to cut legal immigration to the United States by 70%. These same organizations have board members whose goal is to maintain a quote, and I'm quoting directly from the board member, "a European-American majority in the United States." But I've also learned that there's been an outpouring of support from the faith community and from the public at large to challenge the demonization of refugees and immigrants. And in my own community, Northwest Philadelphia, there's a lot of stirring. And we now have new community coalitions coming together to support immigrant and refugee rights. An Executive Director of a small nonprofit is a very taxing job. And I am fortunate to have had a husband, who's here today, Carl Baker, and a family. My grandson is here, also lives in Philadelphia, who stood by my side as we weathered many new policy shifts and crises. I am proud to have a wonderful and competent and diverse staff, including the current Executive Director, who's up here today, Catherine Miller Wilson, and half of our staff are refugees or former immigrants, and there's some sitting in the audience, and an active and hands-on board at HIAS Pennsylvania, some of whom are also up here today. Together with scores of volunteers, the organization has helped thousands of immigrants and refugees whose only goal is to integrate into the fabric of the great American mosaic. And even though I was born and raised in New York City, and believe it or not, I shared a ride with a cab driver the other day who was, lived in the house I was born in in New York, but moved to Philadelphia like I did. I am so proud we have a city council and a mayor who stand with immigrants and refugees. And that is really the final lesson. We may have come over on different boats, some by choice and some by force through our ancestors, but we're all in the same boat now. Thank you for helping us build a united Philadelphia.
Councilordains. Thank you very much. And the next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please give those, read those messages from the mayor?
To the President, the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia. Pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home World Charter, am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills and proposed amendments. Bill numbers 170262, 170263, 170264, 170265, 170266, 170282, 170285, 170287, 170306, 170309, 170310, 170311, 170331, 170333, and 170335, and a Philadelphia City Planning Commission approval of a Temple University Master Plan Amendment. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 21, 2017, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on April 20, 2017, Bill Number 170263. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 26, 2017, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on April 20, 2017, Bill Numbers 160808, 160999, and 161004. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the appointment of Mitchell Michael Carroll to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate a buffered bicycle lane in the eastbound direction on Chestnut Street from South 45th Street to South 34th Street, and to remove a travel lane on Chestnut Street in the same limits. And an ordinance amending Section 172102 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Council Review of Contracts with Certain Entities to restore the exemption from council review provided in the Home World Charter for certain contracts between the city and the Support Center for Child Advocates. And an ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to purchase two properties situated at 1620 South 49th Street and 4900 Graves Ferry Avenue, under and subject to the terms and conditions of the Philadelphia Industrial and Commercial Development Agreement between the city, paid, and the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Decker. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one privilege and non-privilege resolution. The non-privileged resolution was supported by council members Gimm, Don Greenlee, and Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution recognizing May 10, 2017, as 50/50 Day in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution calling on and urging the School District of Philadelphia to permanently prohibit the suspension of elementary-age students from the first through fifth grades.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought I had four. Thank you, Mr. President. I have four bills today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, we had four and seem to have three, so we'll pass it to you as soon as it reappears.
No problem, Councilordains.
An ordinance authorizing the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to purchase two properties situated at 1620 South 49th Street and 4900 Graves Ferry Avenue under and subject to the terms and conditions of the Philadelphia Industrial and Commercial Development Agreement between the city, paid, and the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 40th Street, Girard Avenue, 34th Street, Mantua Avenue, 31st Street, Spring Garden Street, and Lancaster Avenue. And... An ordinance amending Section 14504 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District by adding new areas entitled Palatin Village Zone 1 and Palatin Village Zone 2.
Those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
I'm sorry, you have to foul him? Okay. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate a buffered bicycle lane in the eastbound direction on Chestnut Street from South 45th Street to South 34th Street, and to remove a travel lane on Chestnut Street in the same limits.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That bill will also be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 172102 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Council Review of Contracts with Certain Entities to restore the exemption from council review provided in the Home World Charter for certain contracts between the city and the Support Center for Child Advocates.
And that will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer one bill and one privilege resolution signed by most members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14600 entitled Youth Regulations.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and observing May 1 through May 5, 2017, as Construction Safety Week in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, today I offer one bill, two privilege resolutions, co-signed by three fourths of members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Clearfield Street, Sheddwick Street, Lippincott Street, and 34th Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Public Safety and Children and Youth to hold hearings reviewing the impact of flavored tobacco products such as hood wraps or 4Ks on the youth of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the month of April, 2017, as National Volunteer Month to honor the dedicated service that volunteer workers provide to Philadelphia communities and across the country.
This week's final passes calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill on your behalf and two non-privilege resolutions. And the two non-privilege resolutions are sponsored by myself and Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
A non-privilege resolution urging the Pennsylvania State Legislature to adopt Senate Bill 1134, which seeks to enhance conviction integrity in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania by ensuring access to post-conviction DNA testing.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution urging the Pennsylvania Legislature to reject Senate Bill 383, which would permit school personnel to carry concealed firearms.
Bill 383, which would permit school personnel to carry concealed firearms in schools.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Michael Carroll to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority.
And that will be referred to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Quina Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President.
A privilege resolution recognizing honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Awilda Ocasio for her dedication to the Latino community, and renaming the 3,000 block of F Street between East Indiana and East Clearfield Street as Paseo Awilda Ocasio.
And that will be on this week's calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill, and I wish to be acknowledged after the title is read.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to prohibit medical marijuana dispensary locations within 500 feet of any daycare.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm, uh, I, along with I'm sure all members of our body, as evidenced by the legislation passed by this council, wholeheartedly supported the Commonwealth's passage of Act 16 of 2016, which enabled medical marijuana in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In addition to that, this council, recognizing the level of density in the City of Philadelphia, proactively sent a letter to the Department of Health, and we asked them, Mr. President, to allow us to have a 500-foot radius away from all separation requirements that were included in the Commonwealth's language. And for the record, I want to note that in the letter that we asked for, we asked that schools, along with daycare facilities, be included. When the Commonwealth issued its waiver in response to the mayor's request, along with this council's request, it gave us exactly what we asked for. And I will just read the line that says, "Having reviewed the information provided to it by the City of Philadelphia, the Department of Health approves the City of Philadelphia's request to amend the distance from 1,000 feet to 500 feet for dispensaries to be located within the City of Philadelphia. Therefore, for the City of Philadelphia, a dispensary may not be located within 500 feet of the property line of a public, private, or parochial school or a daycare center." So that was the state's waiver. In addition to that, I was proud when all members of this party, we joined together in unity to send our letter supporting this request that went to the Commonwealth. And the language of our actual letter, and when we're making our ask of the Commonwealth, says, "Council worked with the Kennedy Administration in crafting a dispensary rule that requires a 500-foot setback from our existing regulated uses, schools and other areas that children might frequent, libraries, pools, daycares, parks, and playgrounds." And this strikes a balance between access for patients and concern about the proximity to children in the spirit of the Medical Marijuana Act, and it makes sense for Philadelphia. Well, unfortunately, Mr. President and colleagues, a permit was issued for a dispensary to be located in an area that is within 500 feet of a daycare in the Ninth Councilmatic District, and it is my hope that what I am viewing as a technical amendment, as it would put the bill that this council passed in align with the waiver that the state gave to us, and actually the response to the City Council of Philadelphia that we asked the Commonwealth for in writing. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and that will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
A privilege resolution recognizing and designating May 1 as International Workers' Day, in perpetuity as a day to honor and celebrate the manifold achievements of workers and the historical and continuing struggle of labor movements for justice and fair working
That will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tom Berger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution and one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Memphur Street, Oakdale Street, Tulip Street, Oakdale, Oakdale Street, Survivor Street, and Lehigh Avenue.
That will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution celebrating the 20th anniversary of Theater Exile and honoring the Joe Canuso, and honoring Joe Canuso, who, whom, who helped found and develop Theater Exile, and continues to contribute to the Philadelphia cultural environment today.
And that will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
An ordinance continuing the Mount Airy Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 6,300 to 7,631, and certain blocks or streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue, and for which the Mount Airy Improvement District, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, is the Neighborhood Development District Management Association for the district.
And that bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution initiating action to continue the Mount Airy Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of Germantown Avenue from 6,300 to 7,631, and certain blocks or streets that intersect that portion of Germantown Avenue, for which Mount Airy Improvement District, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, serves as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
And that will be on next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privilege resolutions, cosponsored by Councilmembers Squilla, Gim, Quina Sanchez, Tom Berger, Dom, and Reynolds Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and celebrating the 2017 Philippine Independence Week celebration from June 3 to June 16.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing May 2017 as Asian American and Pacific Islanders' Heritage Month in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and their important contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
And that will also be in this week's final passage calendar. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions, and if you all will bear with me for one second.
Thank you, Councilman. No speeches today. Thank you for recognizing me, Councilman. I'd like to ask for a leave of absence, have council business to attend to. I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills, resolutions, and amendments.
Your leave is granted, and let the record reflect that Council President will be voting ayes on all bills and resolutions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next order of business, next order of business will be the reports of the committees. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report for the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The Committee of the Whole reports five bills with a favorable recommendation, five resolutions, I'm sorry, five resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report of the Committee of the Whole?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole, to which is referred Resolution Number 170120 entitled a resolution reappointing Pat Lebel to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 170121 entitled a resolution reappointing Timothy Snowden to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution 170122 entitled a resolution appointing Daniel, Danielle Del Rey to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution 170123 entitled a resolution appointing Patrick Schillen to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 170124 entitled a resolution appointing Mary Hummel to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached resolution to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. These resolutions will be placed on our final passage calendar for next session of council. Chair now recognizes the Council, Councilman Greenlee for a report of the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The Committee on Law and Government reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chief Clerk, would you please read the report?
The Committee on Law and Government, to which is referred Bill Number 160010 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 2, 200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Recording of Deeds, to provide for further action by the Department of Records in causes, in cases where the department reasonably suspects that a deed has been mistakenly recorded and that a fraudulent transfer of the real property described therein has occurred. And Bill Number 170243 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 1, 100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Definitions, Construction, Penalties, and Enforcement, to authorize the Law Department to standardize the appearance, numbering, and formatting of the Philadelphia Code without the need for further code amendment. And Bill Number 170334 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practice Is Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination by Adding a Provision Authorizing the Commission on Human Relations to Order a Respondent to Cease Operations as a Remedial Measure. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 160010, 170243, and 170334.
Need a second? It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the reading, first reading of this, these bills, Bill Number 160010, 170243, and 170334. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and these bills will be, will be placed on our first calendar reading today. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report for the Committee on Public Works and Public Property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Public Property and Public Works reports five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please, please, read the report?
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, to which is referred Bill Number 170108 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Director of the Free Library of Philadelphia and the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, under a master lease with the landlord for, for space in the building located at 1500 Spring Garden Street, Philadelphia, to house a library for the blind and physically handicapped. And Bill Number 170139 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1500 John F. Kennedy Boulevard. And Bill Number 170142 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a sublease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of the premises located at the Callahan Center, 421 North 7th Street. And Bill Number 170168 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the use by the city of the premises located at 1101 Market Street. And Bill Number 170309 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire a fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by East Bristol Street, O Street, Leaper Street, and Frankfurt Creek. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 170108, 170139, 170142, 170168, and 170309.
It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 170108, 170139, 170142, 170168, and 170309. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading of the calendar today. Next will be the consideration of the calendar, and the next order. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have been read on first reading today. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of city council. There being no additional bills on the first reading calendar today. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up resolutions of bills on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 170369, 170370, 170379, 170381, 170382, 161003A, 170245, and 170110. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage of calendars today of today's council for action. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up in today's session, please do so by giving your name to the Sergeant of Arms to the table to my left. You will be able to, will be called in order as you appears on the sign-in sheet, and you will have three minutes to speak. In order to be fair for all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold that faithfully to within the three-minute limit. So when you begin speaking, you will see the green light on the podium. Then there will be 30 seconds remaining of your time. The light will turn yellow, in which it will be reminded to conclude your remarks. Once the three minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and Sergeant Arms will disconnect the microphone, and at that point, we will yield to the podium for our next speaker. I also reserve the right, pursuant to the rules of council, to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I ask the Chief Clerk, would you please read the name of our first speaker today?
Joe Denahell commenting on 170370, 170369, and 170381. Uh, can I have my three minutes, Council President, or Acting Council President, please? Can I have my three minutes?
Sergeant Arms?
We're about 15 seconds in.
We'll reset your time.
Thank you. This is yet another official decree and writ of man damage quo warrant, and as such requires immediate action and remedy. This council continues to transfer large quantities of private property to RDA, Land Bank, and use the sheriff to issue deeds, possibly without due process. Does rule of law, laws and constitutions, and your sworn duty mean nothing to you? PA Constitution, Article 1, Section 10, nor shall private property be taken without just compensation being first made or secured. From 26 PACSA 703, fair market value is an amount which will be agreed to by a willing and informed buyer and seller. In addition, the delays and costs caused by the government are compensable by law. Yet I have received no compensation. The city, redevelopment authority, Sheriff's Department, and numerous other agencies failed to obey the law before transferring my deed. Upon notification of this breach of constitutions and laws, you are required by oath to shut down agencies until breaches are repaired. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C., 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C., 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 PACSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056... laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate, prosecute, all involved in the illegal deed transfer and theft of my home, 1038 West Wyoming. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C., 1982 property rights for 23 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-of-law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally complying government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require constitution and laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath or law. It takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please read the name of our next speaker?
Calvin O. Martinez.
Thank you. For the record, it's Calvin O'Conne. So, good morning, City Council. My name is Calvin O'Conne, and I live in Philadelphia. I am a former restaurant worker who's worked in the restaurant industry as a cook, as a chef, for 10-plus years. I'm currently the High Road Coordinator with the Restaurant Opportunity Center of Philadelphia, or Pennsylvania, excuse me. The Restaurant Opportunity Center is a national nonprofit whose mission is to improve the wages and the working conditions of our nation's 12 million restaurant workers. I support this resolution because I care about my community. I care about the restaurant workers being treated as the professionals they are. Our behind our rocks, Behind the Kitchen Door Report, found that 58% of workers reported not being paid overtime, close to 40% not receiving safety training, and almost 80% of workers not receiving regular raises. To me, these facts mean two things. One, the local restaurant industry are in need of employers who are creating formal career ladders for their staff and workers who are advocating for their work. That is why I'm here in support of City Council's resolution recognizing every person's fundamental right to earn a living. I am particularly here to advocate for my immigrant family who I've turned tables with. Over half of our industry's workers are below the poverty line. That means poor, which means which means which can be demoralizing when the politics du jour also criminalizes your work. Rock, Pennsylvania is here not only to recognize every person's right to make a wage, but that we all deserve a living wage. Our tipped workers, the people you see when you go in to eat, who also stand in solidarity with this resolution, they know that immigrants are the lifeblood of the restaurant industry. Yet we know that restaurants are facing historical shortages because of anti-immigration rhetoric. That's why more and more our servers are advocating for our immigrant community and other initiatives like One Fair Wage. One Fair Wage being a policy to end the legacy of slavery that is the tip minimum wage, or what some people call tips. In fact, if you were to step back and have a conversation at any dinner table with industry folk, if you sat in at a staff meal, or if you shared a quick coffee with just the knife guy about Philadelphia's restaurant industry, you would most absolutely end up agreeing that the positive contributions of our city's immigrant population and the lack of protections they have and be really just kind of set back on the incoherent gap between the two. People who work in this live in this industry all agree, all workers deserve to feel safe and dignified. So, thank you, guys, for listening to the voices of restaurant workers who are unfortunately, just to remind you, unfortunate lowest paid workers in America. We urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Clerk, would you please read the name of our next speaker?
Maria Cristina. Commenting on 170379.
Mi nombre es Cristina Martinez. Estamos aquí y soy dueña de South Philly Barbacoa. Estamos aquí para llevarla, para llamar la atención al sistema de injusticia del trabajo, con intenciones de abrir una conversación y cultivar la sociedad para cambiar el sistema federal que crimina, criminaliza el trabajo de los inmigrantes.
We are here today to call attention to our unjust system of work with the intention of opening conversation and building solidarity to change the federal system that criminalizes undocumented immigrants' labor.
Como dueña de un restaurante mexicano, encontrado trabajadores con los talentos y experiencias específicas para cocinar mi comida, es ilegal mi gente. No tienen derechos a trabajar.
As a business owner of a Mexican restaurant, hiring people with a specific talent and experience to cook my food is illegal, and my people do not have the right to work.
La pasión, los talentos, la cultura, y la inteligencia que nuestra comunidad emigrante entra a Estados Unidos da al país fuerza y esperanza.
The passion, talent, culture, and intelligence that our immigrant community brings to the United States gives this country strength and hope.
Desafortunadamente, no es suficiente para decir que el sistema es roto porque el sistema que criminaliza el trabajo y deja a los trabajadores vulnerables para explotación del diseño. Necesitamos ver con este claridad y luchar con justicia.
Unfortunately, it's not enough to say that this is a broken system because the system which criminalizes labor that leaves workers vulnerable to exploitation is by design. We must look at this with clarity and fight for justice.
Necesitamos el cambio.
We need to make the change.
Como restaurantes, necesitamos una plataforma y tenemos que seguir usándola para luchar por los derechos humanos. Queremos llevar este sistema revolucionario para otras ciudades y empezar el primero de mayo en Nueva York coordinando con un día de acción nacional del día de sinemigrantes.
As a restaurant, we have a platform, and we will continue to use it to advocate for human rights. We want to take this resolution to pass in other cities, starting in New York on May 1st, a national day of action, a day without immigrants.
City Council, necesitamos que voten por esta resolución. Gracias.
We urge City Council to unanimously vote yes to this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Clerk, would you please read the name of our next speaker?
Estela Hernandez. Commenting on 170379.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Estela Hernandez y soy miembro del nuevo movimiento santuario. Llevo 13 años en Estados Unidos, aquí en Filadelfia. Tengo tres niños, tres hijos, y soy dueña de mi propio pequeño negocio que provee empleo a 24 personas en esta ciudad.
Good morning. My name is Estela Hernandez, and I'm a member of the new sanctuary movement of Philadelphia. I have been in the U.S. for 13 years, all here in Philly. I have three children, and I own a small business that employs 24 people in the city.
Desde que llegamos a este país, mi esposo y yo hemos trabajado por las noches limpiando supermercados. Hace cuatro años tomamos la oportunidad de abrir nuestra propia compañía de limpieza. Desde entonces nuestra vida cambió mucho. Ahora podemos dedicarle más tiempo a nuestra familia, generamos empleo para trabajadores emigrantes, y obviamente pagamos taxes.
Since we came to this country, my husband and I have worked cleaning supermarkets overnight. Four years ago, we took the opportunity to open our own cleaning company. Since then, our life has improved significantly. Now I can dedicate more time to my family. We generate employment for immigrant workers, and obviously we pay taxes.
Como mujer, soy una guerrera y lucho por sobresalir en este país que muchas veces no siento mío. El dolor de no estar junto a mi familia en el país donde nací es inmenso. Es muy difícil no poder estar a su lado durante tiempos difíciles. Cuando quisiera abrazarlos y apoyarlos, el estar aquí es un sacrificio que hago para darle una mejor vida a mis hijos y protegerlos de tanta violencia que hay en mi país. No quiero que mis hijos vivan la pobreza que yo viví. Quiero que sobresalgan, que puedan tener la educación que quieran y merecen.
As a woman, I am a warrior, and I fight to thrive in a country that too often does not feel like my own. The pain of being away from my family in the country where I was born is immense. It is difficult to not be by their side when something difficult happens, and I want to hug them and support them. Being here is a sacrifice, and I make it to give my kids a better life and protect them from the violence in my country. I do not want my children to live in the poverty I lived. I want them to thrive, to have the education that they want and deserve.
Alzo mi voz porque hay muchos como yo sosteniendo esta ciudad y este país. La situación política de ahora está deportando a la gente a la violencia y a la pobreza, y está traumando a nuestros hijos. La economía de este país se beneficia de nuestro trabajo y al mismo tiempo se nos niega derechos básicos. Por nosotros existen empleos en este país. Por nosotros llegan platos de comida a las mesas de muchos. La verdura, la fruta, el pan que ponen en su mesa muchos de ustedes ha pasado por manos emigrantes.
I raise my voice because there are so many people like me sustaining this city and this country. The current political situation is deporting people to violence and poverty and is traumatizing our children. This country's economy exploits our work, yet we are denied basic rights. We generate employment. We make the food on your plates, the vegetables, the fruit, the bread that reaches your tables has probably gone through immigrant hands.
Es nuestro deber como sociedad reconocer el trabajo de todas las personas y luchar por la justicia económica, no solo por los emigrantes, sino para todos. Sabemos que la pobreza que vive la gente en Estados Unidos está conectada con la pobreza que se vive en nuestro país. Es un problema global que va más allá del empleo y que requiere una lucha larga en unión.
It is our duty as a society to recognize the labor of each person and fight for economic justice, not just for immigrants, but for all of us. We know that the poverty the people of the United States experiences is connected to the poverty in our birth countries. It is a global problem that goes beyond work and will require a long fight in unity.
En la lucha por la justicia migrante en el país. Las organizaciones de base trabajamos por muchos años para tener una ciudad más justa y estamos orgullosas, orgullosos del apoyo que hemos ganado de nuestro gobierno local. Aplaudo a este consejo de la ciudad por actuar con buenos valores en un momento político que nos quiere confundir. Hoy estamos aquí orgullosa, no solo por el trabajo que hemos que hacemos diario para el sustento económico, sino también por el trabajo que hacemos diario por la justicia. Gracias.
I applaud Philadelphia for being at the forefront of the fight for migrant justice in this country. We grassroots community organizations have been working for justice in our city for a long time, and we are proud that we have one support from our local government. We applaud today's City Council and encourage it to act on good values. Today, I am here proud of not just our daily work for economics assistance, but also for our daily work for justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Clerk, would you please read the name of our next speaker?
Abraham Lorenzo.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Abraham Lorenzo. I have lived and worked in Philadelphia for about 15 years. I am an immigrant to this country. For the past 12 years, I worked in a restaurant in Center City. They never paid me overtime, and from 2005 to 2016, they did not even pay me a minimum wage. I live off of tips, and they took money from my tips for broken dishes or glasses and credit card fees. I knew what they were doing was wrong. All of us employees did. For a while, though, I didn't really say anything. I didn't want to make waves, and I really wanted to keep my job. Plus, we were all afraid to assert our rights. A lot of the people I worked with had families, and they were terrified of retaliation, whether it was losing their jobs or being deported. I was also scared. Well, I am scared. But I knew someone had to speak up, so I did them, and that is why I'm speaking today. Philadelphia relies on its immigrant workforce. We are your chefs, waiters, dish watchers, you name it. Chances are, you see us every day, but we work in the shadows. Some employers, some employers take advantage of us because they think they can, and others are afraid to stand up for us because it's against the law to employ us. I support this resolution and everything it is trying to do because while we might not be able to fix immigration, Philadelphia can create a culture that recognizes all workers regardless of their immigration status and treats all workers fairly. And just to finish, do not be afraid. Just think for one minute. If we don't speak up, these kind of actions are going to be on and on and on. Don't be afraid. Speak up.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list.
That concludes our public comment period for today's calendar. We will now consider the Bills of Resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. The Clerk, will you please read the title of Resolution 170369?
A Resolution Authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to Dispose of Certain Properties Located in the Fifth Council-Mannick District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the title of Resolution Number 170370?
A Resolution Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. Without consideration, these can make conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 32nd ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the title of Resolution 170379?
A Resolution Recognizing Every Person's Fundamental Right to Earn a Living Regardless of Immigration Status and Affirming the City of Philadelphia's Commitment to Protect and Secure a Safe and Dignified Workplace for All.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim for a motion.
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. I want to first acknowledge Ben Miller, Christina Martinez, Estela Abraham, Calvin, and the Restaurant Opportunity Center for coming out today with your voice and your message about what this resolution is. It is about a human right. It is about recognizing that the United States for the last two decades has been stalled on immigration reform and has not advanced while the world has changed all around us. And it is recognizing that we have a responsibility to uphold fair labor practices and ordinances. That's what this resolution is about. It honors what it means to work, to work with justice. This is a city that has always upheld the right to labor and strong labor rights for all. We feel very strongly that those who exploit labor practices will allow people to live in exploitive circumstances. And by asserting people's right and demanding that the United States seriously takes on immigration reform in this country today, we try to move people into fair work practices and to healthier environments for all. In particular, I just want to note, just, you know, to be grateful for the people who are pushing on this issue, that it matters to have the restaurant industry diversify the message around immigration, who it impacts, what it looks like, how it unfolds in places that we don't always see. And in our kitchens, and in our dishwashing areas, and in all the places where people do good work, this resolution honors them. So with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted.
Councilman O had us laid on to be.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilman O'Neil is opposed voting no. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
You very much. I will be voting no, and I'd like to simply explain that I do support immigrants, and I do support fair labor practices, and they should be enforced. I do believe people should work, and I support people working. However, there is work authorization and work visas. We should encourage the reformation of those reforming them, but a person may have a right to an education, but without an F-1 visa, they cannot attend school. A person may choose to marry the person they love, but if they don't file a I-1 A person may choose to marry the person they love, but if they don't file a I-130 and a 485 and if they are not approved, they cannot live with that person in the United States. And a person should work and they should provide for the family, but it is a process. They need work authorization and therefore, I cannot support the language although I think the spirit is there, but I think it is important that we have a process that we support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taub.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very, very much. Being the son of a dishwasher, a son of an immigrant who spoke more German than English when he arrived, I understand many of these processes. But I would have to agree with my colleague, Councilman O, in that there are work visas that have to be worked out. There is a difference between illegal immigration and exploitation in the restaurant industry. So I would like to be recorded as voting no on this, although I am for labor to be fair. People have the ability to raise a family in dollars, but I think also we have to take a look at all these visas and this is not the United States Senate. So in this sense, I would have to say on this issue, I am voting no when it comes to all the technical parts of the language. The spirit is good. The language is cumbersome and difficult.
Thank you, Councilman. Record will reflect the votes in opposition. Chair recognizes Councilman, or Chair recognizes, clerk, please read the title, Resolution number 170381.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority. Without consideration, deeds convey conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situating the thirty-first ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squill for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the title of Resolution 170382?
A resolution calling for the installation of a city historic marker in front of the home of the AIDS Library of Philadelphia, 1233 Locust Street, and for the dedication of this marker to occur in 2017 to commemorate the thirtieth anniversary of the AIDS Library of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squill for a motion.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the title of Bill number 161003A?
An ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
This bill have been read on two separate days and the question is now, shall the bill finally be passed? The chief clerk, would you please read the roll?
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gornina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark is voting aye. Councilman Heenan.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen, denays are zero. The majority of members haven't voted in the affirmative that this bill passes. Clerk, would you please read the title of the bill number 170245?
An ordinance submitting Chapter 19, 4000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Income Inequality Initiative Earned Income Tax Credit by revising the city's EITC policy, including by expanding it to include nonresidents who work in the city.
This bill haven't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill finally pass? Chief, clerk, would you please read the roll?
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gornina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark is voting aye. Councilman Heenan.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen, denays are zero. The majority of members haven't voted in the affirmative that bill passes. Clerk, would you please read the title of Bill number 170110?
An ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, and motor fuel for use by the city in city facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years.
Clerk, would you please read the roll? This bill haven't been read on two different days. The question is now, shall the bill finally be passed? Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gornina Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger. Aye. Council President Clark is voting aye. Councilman Heenan.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen, denays are zero. The majority of members haven't voted in the affirmative. This bill passes. Are there any more bills on today's calendar? Now we will have consideration of the resolutions. Clerk, would you please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A resolution recognizing May 10, 2017 as 50-50 Day in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and observing May 1 through May 5, 2017 as Construction Safety Week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the joint city council committees on public safety and children and youth to hold hearings reviewing the impact of flavored tobacco products such as hood wraps or 4Ks on the youth of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and seconded for the resolution to be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the month of April, 2017 as National Volunteer Month to honor the dedicated service that volunteer workers provide to Philadelphia communities and across the country introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I move for its adoption.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Awilda Ocasio for her dedication to the Latino community and renaming the 3,000 block of F Street between East Indiana and East Clearfield Street, Plazao Awilda Ocasio, introduced by Councilwoman Gornina Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for its adoption.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and designating May 1 as International Workers' Day in perpetuity as a day to honor and celebrate the manifold achievements of workers and the historical and continuing struggle of labor movements for justice and fair working conditions introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution celebrating the twentieth anniversary of Theater Exile and honoring Joe Canuso, whom helped founded and develop Theater Exile and continues to contribute to the Philadelphia cultural environment today introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squill for a motion.
I move for the adoption of resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the 2017 Philippine Independence Week celebration from June 3rd to June 16th introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May 2017 as Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and their important contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded. The resolution be adopted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. Chairman.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to alert people that this Saturday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the DEA has distributed, along with other law enforcement and community organizations, information regarding National Prescription Drug Takeback Day to turn in your unused or expired prescription medication for safe disposal. People, if they don't know where they can return their prescription medications, can go to www.dea.gov to find out. And also, I'd like to invite all my colleagues and the public to attend the raising of the Vietnamese Freedom and Heritage Flag tomorrow, Friday at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall outside at the northeast flagpole. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any speeches on part of the majority? The chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I just want to make an announcement for an event that we are hosting this Saturday, April 29th, at the Dixon House located at 1920 South 20th Street. We will be hosting our annual Tangled Title and Property Taxes Workshop. And so, if you have constituents who are experiencing difficulties with paying their taxes, mortgage foreclosures, a house going up for sheriff's sale, title may not be in their name, we are welcoming everyone to come out and participate in partnership with the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office, Department of Revenue, Office of Property Assessment, Community Legal Services, and the Department of Records. We invite everyone to come out and take advantage of this workshop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank residents of northwest Philadelphia, in particular the 450 who signed in. I'm sure there were more because everyone didn't get a chance to sign in. And I want to say a special thank you to them for being extremely patient during the community meeting that I held on this past Tuesday, Mr. Chair, at the Oxford Presbyterian Church. And it was relative to the city of Philadelphia's issuance of a permit for a medical marijuana dispensary on the 8300 block of Stanton Avenue. And I think it is very important, Mr. Chair, to say a special thanks to this community because they did not do what folks expected them to do at this meeting, and that was to shout reasons associated with a NIMBY philosophy, "Not in My Backyard," about why they did not want this medical marijuana dispensary in their community. In fact, Mr. Chairman, they did just the opposite. They showed that they were knowledgeable and well-educated about the public benefits and all of the positive externalities associated with the medicinal use of marijuana and that they support the use of it 1,000 percent. All of the questions that they raised were relative to the law and how our zoning law from a land use perspective conflicts with state law along with what council passed and/or councils intend. So, and I also want to say to them, because we had a very good meeting and you know how those large community meetings can be, and they had about two busloads of people who were bussed in, Mr. Chairman, from other communities. And I share with my fellow councilwoman, Blackwell, that one bus came from west Philadelphia and one bus came from the county. And as we, those who live within 500 feet after they spoke and then the community at large spoke, the disruption that was expected to take place was not successful. So to all of those residents who attended, thank you for holding your cool. Thank you for showing the savviness of our community and your support for the medicinal use of marijuana and only addressing this issue from a land use perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, we thank you for your leadership, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today is actually a very positive day to be here in the city council. Every day is a good day to be in city council, but I want to acknowledge the work of two members of this body, in particular our council president, for helping to create the Philadelphia Energy Authority. This morning, myself along with Councilwoman Brown, had a chance to participate in the kickoff of Solarize Philly, which is a citywide program to lower costs, simplify the process, and create jobs and have all Philadelphians to go solar at their home. The signup period with the Philadelphia Energy Authority will begin July 1st and will go through September 30th. And the Philadelphia Energy Authority will help with developers to keep the costs low by bundling neighborhood installations, reducing marketing outreach costs, and are going to work with the Office of Sustainability, our Department of License and Inspection, and PICO to keep the process moving as quickly as possible. They also will work with developers and lenders to provide financing to homeowners. Through this process, Solarize Philly would also help fund solar training at the school district and help low and moderate income families to go solar themselves. This is important because, one, it'll create jobs. They anticipate that it will create at least 73 jobs in 18 months. And also, you know, solar in itself creates 15 jobs for every 100 households that participate. And we have over 120,000 rooftops eligible citywide for solar. It all supports our community. It keeps energy costs in check and we all know that the city of Philadelphia has the largest level of poverty in a large city in the country and provides an opportunity for people to reduce their energy bills. And also, it helps to combat climate change. And so, with Solarize Philly, what they plan to accomplish is by solarizing 500 homes, increase solar power on Philadelphia rooftops, subsidize 137 low and moderate income households to install solar on their rooftops, expand solar job training programs in the Philadelphia schools, and create 73 good living wage jobs. In addition to the fact that we have Solarize Philly, which was an initiative that came out of the work of our council president in creating the Philadelphia Energy Authority, I must also commend Councilwoman Blackwell for her initiative and the resolution we presented today and her using her power as a district councilperson and leveraging the assets in her district, that University of Pennsylvania, and working with the building trades and many other partners to really bring about a citywide initiative, something that many people in this body and those who were in this body before have really worked hard to try to achieve and provide an opportunity for children coming to the school district of Philadelphia to go into apprentice programs in the building trades. So I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell for her leadership and also thank Council President for his leadership in creating the Philadelphia Energy Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to highlight and recognize Councilwoman Gim and all the other council folks, Blackwell and others, who've supported some of our public stance and some of the challenges with our immigration issues. I particularly want to highlight that on Monday, the resolution just passed by Councilwoman[1729.91] highlight that on Monday, the resolution just passed by Councilwoman Gim, Monday, is the Day of Action. And I want to join Juntos and the Black and Brown Workers Collective and all the other folks, the LGBTQ, HIV-positive Muslim, young people and workers, all who represent 75 percent of our city's population, the growing vocal majority, on their Day of Action. I have publicly sent a letter to Rob Wonderling and the Chamber of Commerce asking that all businesses in the City of Philadelphia respect people's right to this Day of Action and hope that on Tuesday, workers are not penalized for exercising their private rights, their private rights to publicly demonstrate. You know, my council colleagues have joined us as we've striked and gone back and walked workers back. I hope that on Tuesday, workers are welcomed back to their job sites without incident. And I want to thank all of the communities for standing up, and particularly the Black and Brown coalitions that are forming around this very important issue here in Philadelphia and across the country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to call everybody's attention to next week is Philly Tech Week. And that's an important event in Philadelphia. We have a growing tech industry, especially among our young people. On Tuesday, May 2, from 5:30 to 9:30, there's a scavenger hunt at Curaleat, 2401 Walnut Street. There's a lot of sponsors involved, and the money's going to Coda by Kids. On Wednesday, I think it's May 3, 5:30 to 8:30, I invite everybody to go to the Philly Tech Expo at the Armory on 23rd Street. It's fascinating to see our young people, what they're doing. And another note I'll just share with you, Coda by Kids, I have a challenge out to the tech community to sponsor 20 different public high schools. I'm personally sponsoring four high schools, 15 kids in each high school, one of them's Bartram. We're going to teach coding to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, 15 kids per school. Cost is about $15,000 per high school. I'm going to sponsor four schools. I'm asking the tech community to sponsor 16. We're up to 11 schools so far. So if you know of any tech companies or anyone who's interested, we can change the lives of 300 young people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. There are no more speeches on the minority. Were the minority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown for motion and adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that city council stay adjourned until Thursday, May 4, 2017, at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved and seconded. Council stay adjourned until Thursday, May 4, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all so much for your time today.